Okay.
Yeah, as far as I know, I mean, I won't have the final results until the 23rd, but.
They let her out without a brain.
Yeah.
She knows she has a brain.
But, you know, everything seemed to go fine. I mean, didn't have any problem, you know, how they give you all these like listed numbers and, you know, all this kind of crazy stuff.
The only thing I've ever had to do is that wellness, that wellness exam.
I do hate to cut you off.
They have important things to discuss.
Yeah, yeah, no, I don't think there's.
By tens or something.
No, I don't.
No, I didn't have that one. I forget. I didn't, actually, when I come to think of it, I didn't have any number ones, and that's not my strength anyway, so I was just as glad.
They say like, count back from 100 by 6.
All right.
And let's go, we have a lot on the agenda.
Yes, we do.
Think, okay, 100 minus 6 is.
Yeah.
Folks, I'm calling this meeting the Millersville Borough Council to order as of 6 o'clock PM. This meeting is, as a reminder, being livestreamed. You can come in and find a seat, that's fine. We are going to hold off on the pledge and moment of silence briefly. We have a few public hearings that we do need to get through ahead of time. First on our agenda is an ordinance to amend the Millersville Borough zoning ordinance, Chapter 380, zoning to revise regulations governing the parking of recreational vehicles and trailer. At this time, if any individual from the community would like to come up and speak on this particular matter, I invite you to do so. Your comments will be limited to five minutes. We do ask that you come up to the podium and speak into the microphone. If you are unable or unwilling, we can certainly have a microphone brought to you. Okay, seeing no one race to the microphone, we will close the public hearing then to consider the vote on this ordinance. Are there any comments from members of council? All right, seeing none, then I will propose a motion to adopt the draft ordinance to amend zoning ordinance governing parking of large recreational equipment as presented and advertised. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Give that one to Phyllis. Final chance for comments. Very well, seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to our second public hearing. This is ordinance, hmm.
To amend?
Yes, ordinance to amend the Millersville Borough zoning ordinance to create a new LCO, limited commercial overlay district that would apply generally along portions of East Street, or, I'm sorry, portions of the east side of George Street, north of James Street, to include three lots north of Normal Street, and to include adjacent lots along both sides of East Frederick Street. I now invite members of the public to come to speak on these, on this particular matter. Again, please come to the podium and speak into the microphone, or request that a microphone be brought to you. Again, your comments will be limited to five minutes. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? I was certain we had somebody. I'm not gonna force ya. Very well, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Do we have comments from council on this matter, the limited commercial overlay? All right. In that case, I thought this was gonna be long, y'all. Thank you so much. I would like to propose a motion to adopt the draft ordinance to amend the Millersville Borough zoning ordinance to create a new LCO, that is a limited commercial overlay district that would apply generally along portions of the east side of George Street, north of James Street, to include three lots north of Normal Street, and include adjacent lots along both sides of East Frederick, as presented and advertised. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Marion on that one? Final chance for comments. Very well, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Very well, in that case, the motion passes unanimously. Our third and final public hearing, this is an ordinance to levy taxes upon all taxable real property within the borough for general borough purposes for the year 2025. I'll now open the floor to comments from the public. I will run through the reminders. Please come to the podium, use the microphone, or request the microphone be brought to you. Your comments will be limited to five minutes. Very well, we will close the public hearing then. I will make a motion to adopt the draft ordinance to levy taxes upon all taxable real property within the borough for general borough purposes for the year 2025, as presented and advertised. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second? Was that Marion?
Linda.
Linda.
Linda, very good. Final chance for comments. Very well, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions. Motion passes unanimously. That will close the public hearing portion of our meeting. At this time, we'll be resuming regular business. I would like to start by asking you all to please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all, you may be seated. All right, next on the agenda, I am proposing a motion to approve the council minutes for the meeting held on November 12th, 2024. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on those meeting minutes, corrections or amendments need to be made? Very well, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, I invite members of the public to come and discuss items, I'm sorry, let me actually read the script here. Council will hear any comments, requests, or concerns from members of the public related to items on the agenda or other matters. You will have five minutes to speak. Please either come to the microphone to speak, or ask that the microphone be brought to you. Please also give your name and a general address for the record. If anybody would like to address council, now is the time. Very well. Seeing none, we will move forward. Here we are, I believe we have, we have somebody from Parks Commission, Rebecca, to speak? Or are we simply moving on to the Pavilion naming motion?
Essentially moving on, although Karen is here, Karen wanted to speak on it, but I think for the most part, everything was in the back.
It certainly was. All right. Very good. In that case, I will propose a motion to accept a resolution to name Pavilion A in Freedom Memorial Park after John Herr, and be recognized with a plaque. Do I have a second?
A second.
To Mike. Very well, any discussion required on this? Other than complaints that it's overdue? Very well, in that case, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries with unanimity.
The next one, Linda with.
Oh, yes, sorry about that. At this time, we will have our Blue Rock Regional Fire Commission report from our own Linda Belair.
And I will wait till next, you know, to the, till we have the council meeting.
Since we're not gonna have a council meeting this month, do you want to do it now?
I didn't bring it with me.
Okay, no problem. We can certainly handle that in January then and move on. All right. Next item, budget items for action. We are starting with consideration of approval of the 2025 budget as proposed and advertised. So I will just get us started with a motion to accept the 2025 proposed budget as presented and advertised. Do I have a second?
Second.
From Phyllis. Any discussion on the budget at this point? Sure hope not, because we need to pass this. Very good. In that case, all those in favor of the motion to accept the 2025 proposed budget, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions. And the motion carries with unanimity, thankfully. We also have a resolution to establish a new fee schedule as discussed in our November meeting, so I will propose a motion to accept the resolution to establish a new fee schedule for Millersville Borough effective January 1, 2025. Do I have a second for that?
A second.
Second from Marion. Best chance for discussion on this. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions. The motion carries with unanimity. At this time, we will break into our individual committees, starting with the Finance Advisory Committee. Hmm, oh, no, hit me.
The next items are just, are items that need to be voted out committee that got tabled from the 26th meeting. So don't go into committees yet.
Oh, very good. That, I was wondering, I thought that might have been just like a formatting typo on the agenda. All right.
No, it is, it is meant to be there.
So we've taken care of budget items, so now it's just approval of September and October financial reports then? Very well, then for the full council.
Want me to do it?
Go ahead.
Motion to accept the September and October financial report and authorize staff to satisfy the ordinary and routine obligations incurred by the borough this month.
Seconded.
A second.
And that's out of committee, so.
That is, oh, that's out of committee, didn't even need me.
Yeah. So we need to take a vote? Is there any discussion? Then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Then that motion carries.
Sure does. And then we have Personnel Advisory Committee, consideration of an appointment of Tara Stowe Hussain to fill vacancy on the Planning Commission, with a term ending on 10/31/2026. This one also out of committee, I believe.
Yeah, I, don't I do that? Because I'm the prime.
You may feel free to make a motion.
We make a motion? Okay, I'll make the motion.
Just read it.
I'll make the motion to accept or reject the appointment of Tara Stowe, is it Hussain? To fill a vacancy on the Planning Commission with a term ending 10/31/26.
No second required? Any discussion on this appointment? Very well, then all those in favor of accepting it, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? And carries.
Now, do I do the next one?
Yep.
Yeah, I do right here. Okay, the next one is a motion to accept the reappointment of Lynn Miller to the zoning hearing board with a term ending 12/31/29.
This is, also does not require a second because it is out of committee?
No, it does not, it's out of committee.
Any discussion required on Lynn Miller's appointment? Very well, all those in favor then, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions. That motion also carries. You got one more.
Yes, a motion to accept the reappointment of Karen DeLong to the Park Commission with the term ending 12/31/27.
Very well, again, out of committee does not require a second. Is any discussion required for the appointment of Karen DeLong? The reappointment, my apologies. Very well, in that case, all those in favor of this reappointment, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions. Once again, measure passes, or the motion passes with unanimity. Sorry about that. Now we'll move into our individual committees, starting with Finance. Will the Finance Advisory Committee please indicate so by raising their hands? One, two, three, four. We have our quorum. First, a review and approval of the November financial reports. Having reviewed those, I see nothing that requires discussion, as long as everybody else agrees. And seeing just a bunch of nods, I'm gonna make a motion to accept the November financial report and authorize staff to satisfy the ordinary and routine obligations incurred by the borough for this month. All those on the committee in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
You need a second first.
I did, you're quite all right.
I'll take, I'll do the second.
There we go, we'll give it to Phyllis. Let me get that vote one more time. All those in favor indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And abstentions. Very well.
And Joe?
Yes.
Thank the council and, and the citizens. I think it was in October when the representative from the library came here and pleaded his case, and we agreed, and the citizens were here for that, and they agreed. I'm proud of them for that. We have a library at Millersville, but it's absolutely worthless to the community, with all due respect. And I, I'm embarrassed by some of the surrounding municipalities that greatly reduce their, you know, their.
Contribution, yeah, their contributions and so on.
So I'm very proud that we kept our fee as, as it is, and, because my kids use that library a lot, and I know a lot of people who use the library system, but.
Actually, I believe we increased it from last year's budget.
We may have, yeah, but I was very proud that we were able to do that as a community.
Thank you, Mike. I believe this next bit, I do have something to present to us, Rebecca, on the investment strategy, investment banking strategy?
Yes, so what I want to discuss with the committee this evening is both a continuation of a conversation we had back a few months ago, but also with some new information as well. Coming out of this year's budget process, the last couple of years' audits, as well as some really good conversations with all of our different banking institutions. We would like to recommend, you know, our sort of professional opinion on, on sort of where we are in terms of our banking strategy. Is a recommendation to consolidate our accounts into fewer banking institutions that offer the good service that we've been receiving now, and offer a higher return on the investments that we do have. What, just due to the, the timing of this, this evening, and because we are really hoping to sort of aim start January 1 with clean books, so to speak. I would like to bring this to a discussion for Finance Committee this evening, but then I'd also like to bring it back up during the manager's report for full council as well, just because there is not another meeting this month. We're looking to specifically consolidate into two of our banking institutions, those being Members First Bank, the local branch here in Millersville, and Unives Bank, which is where, as of last year, we started doing government investments in. This, I think, helps to alleviate some of the issues that we have on the accounting side, but also on the customer service side, and on ensuring that we're getting, you know, the phrase, getting the best bang for your buck when it comes to things like interest accrual, and, and low fees on having those accounts. For the sake of, of council, and for, of, without going too much into the weeds of it, we're looking at separating out our accounts so that our different funds all have their own dedicated account versus doing consolidated funds like we have now that causes a lot of confusion and issue on the accounting side, in our accounting system, and doesn't make it easy for you all to understand either. It's, it, it certainly complicates things, and we generally have, you know, we, we get good rates on things that we're invested in, without having to have these consolidated funds. We've had numerous conversations with our auditor, numerous conversations with the, the representatives from both of those banking institutions. I think we feel really comfortable with what they're offering, and how we can make this, this change, and make it much easier going forward into the future and going into next year, especially knowing that next year would also be the, a year that we're looking at making changes to our accounting system itself, as well as our payroll system. So what I, I'm, I'm looking for council to, to sort of bring back during the manager's report is approval to move forward with the creation of those additional accounts per fund. And then being able to go ahead and make that happen before the start of January 1, so that on January 1, we can make those arrangements. It doesn't, it, the easiest way to say it is, it doesn't actually make any difference into the money that we have. It's truly just a matter of rearranging the money, and making it a little easier on really every end of the process. And is more of a best practice, especially when it comes to the fact that we have our different proprietary funds, like we've talked about during our budget process, the fact that our O1 and 31 are, are sewer operating, are sewer revenue. It, it really is best practice to have those separated out for, for, for cleanliness of the books, and to ensure that we always have as positive a understanding as possible of what, what we have to work with. So that's our recommendation, and I welcome any questions.
So we were discussing, especially on more on the investment, less on the banking side of things, toward the end of summer, as I recall. Has there been any change from that strategy as outlined? I know that there was a, some interest rate changes and things of that nature that made us pump the brakes a little bit before making any decisions. Now that we've had a few months to see that settle out, is there going to be any substantial change in the investment strategy as it had been presented, say, three or four months back?
The only change from how we had presented in the past was that we were looking at keeping the Fulton Bank account as an investment account, and at this point, we get more interest moving it to Unives instead of having it with Fulton. So, and it, then that's one less banking institution we have to deal with.
And that was, as I recall, Fulton was one of the institutions that we were putting the least amount of money in.
Yes, that as well, that as well.
So Rebecca, are you looking for us to make a motion out of committee so that it can be approved by council later in the meeting?
That would be ideal.
Okay.
If you, the, for, for your ease and for our ease, if you want to receive, for this part of the meeting, approve the general strategy that I've just laid out, and then when we get to the end of the meeting, we can do a more specific motion.
Toward the end of the meeting, and during your manager's report, are you going to have something visual to present us, like an actual bear? How do I want to say this? The actual meat of this plan?
So because of the fact that we are not gonna know exactly how, like, the actual dollar amount that we're transferring from one account to another until that day, because of the fact that money comes in and out of the borough every day, we don't have an exact layout to have that. And talking with our auditors, we, we, we have a, a sort of a plan of how we're gonna do it. The best, the best visual I can say is in the budget document itself, where you see the list of each fund, how much we have in it, how much we expect to have at the end of the year, and how much we expect to have at the beginning of, or the end of next year. That's the best visual that I could give you, because that shows exactly the breakout of each fund, and how much then you would see in those funds.
And that is in the backup?
That's in the backup, yeah.
All right.
I, I can make a motion then. I, I would make a motion that we move forward with a plan for 2025 that involves consolidating our accounts into fewer banking institutions that offer the best service and the highest return on investment.
Seconded.
The Finance Committee. Second, from them.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they have to come from you.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay. I saw more, whatever. So that'll be out of committee that.
Yeah, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? The motion will carry then, and we will vote on that as a council later in the meeting. That is the last item that the Finance Committee had, so I will be turning the gavel over to Personal Advisory Committee. I believe that is you, Linda.
It is, yes. We have several people that have reappointments and appointments, so I'd like to have a motion to accept the reappointment of Daniel Ziegler to the vacancy board.
Before starting, could you?
Oh, excuse me.
Do we have a quorum for the Personnel Committee?
I don't think we do. We only have two.
All right, so.
No, I think, we only have two on the Personnel Committee. I don't think you're on the Personnel Committee.
Oh, I used to be, I forgot.
Marianne is.
I'm not on that one.
No, so it's only two.
So we're not going to be able to?
It's Marianne and Darlene.
Yes.
The only items on our, for Personnel are voting items.
Yeah, unfortunately, we will not be able to. Yeah, pass any motions.
Even at, with all of the committee, with all of us here?
No, what we could do is take these votes as part of council. I don't necessarily advise that unless there is a reason for haste in these. Otherwise, we can handle this in January. Is there a specific reason to move forward with these appointments and reappointments?
Other than being efficient and getting it over, and so we can start January fresh.
The, sorry, the only issue is that we, best practice would have been that we would have started the meeting with a vote to amend the agenda, to move these things from committee to regular agenda items. I would say just from, from an administration side, we, we won't really run into any issues with these folks not being reappointed until January, for the sake that those, those groups won't even be meeting, so. We should be okay.
Very well.
Okay.
And it's only voting items that we have for Personnel?
That's correct.
Very well. Then we'll move on to Public Welfare and Public Works with Councilmember Guyberson.
Okay. The first item on here, roll call, which is everyone on Public Works that's here, please raise your hand. So there's three of us, so we do have a quorum. And the first thing is a review of the November codes and zoning report, Rob?
Thank you, council. So for November, we've done nine permits and seven, seven inspections for the rentals. We had 136 renewals and 119 inspections. In December so far, we've issued four permits and have performed one inspection. And for the rentals so far, we have 27 renewals and then 22 inspections for December. Does anybody have any questions for me on anything else on the report?
I don't believe so, Rob. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to the next item, which is a discussion of a false alarm ordinance. Now, I believe we do have some folks here this evening that might wish to weigh in on this particular topic, because we were, we had invited, I think Keith is here, and Jeff, and I saw Tom somewhere. There he is, back in the corner. This is something that we have been discussing at length for quite a while. And we have had the solicitor prepare some ordinances. Some we liked, some we weren't sure about certain aspects of it. And one of the things that we felt was a main sticking point is that we feel we need to have a very accurate description of what constitutes a false alarm. So, gentlemen, would you like to weigh in on that?
Or, sorry, just.
Go ahead.
For logistic purposes, and so I'm just gonna get caught on the mic. I should, so that I could ask those of you who are part of this conversation to maybe come to the front row, and I can put a mic up there. Is that okay?
Am I gonna start writing?
We'll be loud.
Okay, who would like to begin?
Yeah, Jeff Beers from Student Lodging Incorporated. I, I agree that this is, this is definitely a topic that needs to be discussed, and to your point, I think that we do need to be very deliberate in how we, how we define false alarms. For instance, I took a look at our alarms this, for, for this year. Blue Rock shares a spreadsheet with us, and I appreciate that, and it lists out the, the dates, the times, the addresses, and the causes when they're known. And we had 20, since January 1 through the end of November, we had 22 calls on student lodging properties. Now, most of these calls are. Now, most of these calls are for our Brookwood Core Department complex, and the reason for that is that our alarm system in Brookwood dispatches the fire department when there's an alarm. Our wellness apartments do not do that. That would be when the alarm goes off, it'd be just like in your house, you'd have to call 911. The only time that it would trip in the wellness apartments for Blue Rock's role would be is if the sprinklers went off, whereas in Brookwood, the alarm goes off, the fire company comes. Of those twenty-two calls, I'm going off my memory here, we had approximately six that were unknown. We had approximately six that were smoking. We had another five or so that were burnt food, and we had one or two that were our contractor not putting the system on test before they went and did their work. So I, from my perspective, and this is just my perspective, I haven't talked this over with the school district or the university, I think that in that scenario, or in those couple scenarios I just described, I think that obviously if a student is smoking in an apartment where there shouldn't be smoking, whether it's cigarettes or vape or something a little bit more judicial, I think that's obviously, that is a false alarm. You know, that's wasting everyone's time, Blue Rock's time, our time, everyone's time. I would agree again with the incidents where our contractors are not putting the system on test. I mean, I kind of, my litmus test is, is it, you know, is it intentional? Is it, you know, was there a mistake made to bring the fire company down? The only instance I think of those four that I described that I have trouble saying, okay, there should be a fine levied or some sort of penalty, would be the burnt food, because in that case, the alarm system in Brookwood is operating exactly as it was designed. You know, the smoke set the alarm off. Sometimes in previous years, we haven't had any, I don't think this year, where a student was curling their hair and maybe burnt their hair underneath the smoke detector and sent it off. If the system is operating as intended, I would push back on the idea that that is a false alarm. The others I agree wholeheartedly with, that we, you know, if a fine helps mitigate that or make that better, I think that that absolutely should be in place.
Did you say there were five burnt food?
Yeah, no, I have, I have some.
I have it here in my folder, I just have to find it.
If you want to comment, I'll look that up, or I did not do the math on the other side.
I know you said there were twenty-two, and so all of those would be considered false alarm except for however many were burnt food.
Yeah.
Okay, so I just kind of want to have an idea how many of those volunteers went out on.
I'll give you the exact number here in a moment.
All right. Who traces the false alarms? I mean, does it go back to, can they trace who actually?
The fire department actually maintains that spreadsheet.
Oh, okay.
So they, whatever they find when they get there, they add it to the spreadsheet.
And I had asked last year, and they have been very good about it, the fire department, giving me, giving us, I should say, a very good breakdown of the false alarms that are in the borough and with the addresses and so on, and for the most part, a lot of them have been down in student lodging or in that general area. And I do have a note here about, let me get my paper clip off of here.
When you say student lodging, are you referring to the apartment complexes or are you talking about student housing in general?
I'm talking about, in general, Hillview Avenue.
Okay, yeah, yep.
That's the biggie.
Right.
That is more than anything else on the list. But from eleven one twenty-four to five thirty-one twenty-four, there were a hundred and one calls in the borough, twenty-six of which were false alarms, which makes it twenty-five percent of the calls that they had to go out on were false alarms. And I took the data that they gave us and I marked it, and a lot of it, I think, is college-related. Tom, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Again, my name's Thomas Waltz, I'm the A V P for facilities at the university. I've also invited Paul Heel, he's our E H S director. He's critical to some of the measures that we put in place to, again, mitigate and eliminate, you know, prevent some of the false alarms. Just a quick summary, I think I shared with you at the beginning of the year that we had three false alarms at the beginning. I think that was up until March or April.
Yeah, it was only like two, maybe three, but I thought it was maybe two.
And then since then, we've had, I, again, we get the same spreadsheet from Blue Rock. What I also do is I check with our ESCO, that is our central monitoring company, every Monday to look for dispatchable alarms. So I actually have some additional fire alarms, you know, that, again, it's more than what's on Keith's list that I could share with, I've shared with Dwayne in the past. So I had a total of thirty-two alarms for this calendar year. And I had three questions, unknowns, and then, again, we need to define and really dive into, okay, why is this unknown? Is it a faulty device? Is it just someone who smoked and then just opened the window to clear? Again, we've got to really find those out. I had six total that I classified as false alarms, those three that I mentioned earlier at the beginning of the year. Recently, we had Halloween, we had some student have a fog machine in one of our buildings, and yes, the system worked and that was just...
Would that have been Halloween by any chance?
Yes, it was. And then we had a contractor working on an Ansel system. This is a food suppression system over the hood in the new Chick-fil-A area. He was moving some wires. Again, that should have been on test, you know, because again, it's not the fire alarm, it's part of the fire alarm system. And then what was the other one? We had Pacillo. We had, we're working on Pacillo to put the HVAC in, and the contractor was working in the mechanical room. The building was not put on test. One of the common findings that I saw was when they're not put on test is when Paul, he had, he was out medically in surgery, so I don't hold him accountable, but it's like, but part of the lessons learned is, okay, now I have the approval to put buildings on test. We have another electrician that can put buildings on test as well as my maintenance director, so we have a little bit more cushion to put buildings on test when these apps are in the office. The other thing we implemented is our previous fire alarm tech just came up through the system. Our new fire alarm tech who's responsible for this is NICE certified, so this is the industry standard for fire alarm technicians. So he's a level three, so NICE starts at one, two, three, so he, and it goes up to four levels, so he is very, very qualified. One of the results I see from having him in this role is our trouble alarms. We average like thirty trouble alarms, which does dispatch Blue Rock, but we've had an average of thirty to thirty-five daily. Now that he's in charge, I'm having like eight to ten daily. So again, that's an indication that he's on top of the system and taking appropriate actions. He's also involved in, you know, silencing devices and all that stuff, and he's a double check that Paul works hand in hand. And then some of these other things that we, like, we had a fire alarm recently on Pacillo Gym, not the mechanical one, I'm saying. We have a temporary unit, it has a propane, and we identified, it went off one morning. We turn it on and we dispatched Blue Rock. Again, the measures that we put in place is, we've been using this for five weeks without incident. And then we turn it on one day, cold days, we have cold days, I don't know if it was condensation, but now we implemented another measure of, the PM goes in there, he caps the smoke head, which is right in the hallway, he turns it on, he waits for, it's to warm up and everything, and then he takes the device off. So again, I did not consider that a false alarm. I don't know if Keith did or not, but it's like, you know, we were taking necessary actions to, as we identify things, okay, well, how can we avoid this from happening again? So again, we don't want to dispatch Blue Rock. We understand as a volunteer, I think I shared with you, you know, my dad was a volunteer fire chief for years. Taxes, the volunteers, the taxes, the family members there, everything, so we don't want to fruitlessly exercise these individuals. So we're taking necessary actions to help. I don't know if you want to comment on your process for burn permits or anything?
Yeah, so anytime we have hot work done, which involves brazing, welding, anything of that nature, I now require a permit, which was something that we hadn't been doing previously, though it is kind of an industry standard, and that was the cause of alarm in the Boyer Building when that was under renovation. So when that happened, I implemented these stricter procedures that I review with the maintenance staff regularly, and then I also developed administrative controls for any time that there's work being done that should require the system to be put on test, because previously, we've been having countless incidents in which we were doing fire alarm testing or other things, and the procedures weren't followed properly. So we now have a double-check sort of system for trying to avoid having those needless false alarms, and it might still happen, I think, once this year, and that was my mistake. But for the most part, I think the things that I've implemented have significantly decreased the amount of false alarms so far this year. I think it's around fifty percent or more of a fifty percent decrease in what at least we were considering false alarms, which would be something that occurred because we failed to take proper action to prevent it.
So to answer your question, I would define false alarms as those that are self-imposed. I agree with Jeff, if we have contractors, if we have maintenance staff, individuals coming on campus or on campus doing work that we know that it's going to create smoke, like soldering, welding and stuff, and we fail to put the test, the building on test, we do a fire alarm and we fail to put the building on test when we do fire alarm drills and stuff like that. So it's a self-imposed, we do have a lot of burnt foods, some smoking, you know, we, some were like mac and cheese without adding water. It's, so it's...
Well, I know those things are going to continue to happen, and it really does sound to me like you are really working at improving this, and we did start to see that last year and felt really good about that. Once the high school construction was done, that seemed to also cut down on a lot of our false alarms here in the borough. And I know that I had to ask you folks to work on this, so now I want to hear from Keith from Blue Rock.
And could I just answer?
Sure.
I have a question here. I thought at our last meeting, borough's last meeting, I thought the focus was to have an agreement of the three entities, the high school, university, and fire department. I mean, we have to have the general public in here too, but I, wasn't our focus to have you guys have an agreement exactly what a false alarm is? We all want this, especially the fire company, we want this resolved. So is there an agreement between all of the entities here or not yet?
Mike, I think part of that was that what we had requested was that the entities all work together to find solutions that would start to cut down on the number of false alarms, which they have done, but we have not specifically said to them, what is your definition of a false alarm? Because that's one of the first things that will have to go in the ordinance, we have to have that spelled out, so there's no question about what constitutes a false alarm.
Well, the word self-imposed came up there.
Yes.
That's pretty easy. So if that could be part of the agreement with everyone, self-imposed, but then I know that it's difficult for the, to, for the college to, because of the different places it happens.
Yeah.
But I, if you guys have an agreement here, that's the focus for...
There is an agreement.
You want, you want this resolved, I know that.
Tom, did you want to add something to that?
Yes, ma'am, I had one more comment on the false alarm, if it's a mechanical failure, because devices do fail. We, we had, like the pool stations, you know, that you, the springs will fail and will activate. We had actually two incidents of just being bumped, not being pulled and everything. So if there's a mechanical device component failure, that we do not resolve in a timely manner. Again, we have to find time, is that within two hours, within two days, whatever, but if we don't take the appropriate action to replace the faulty device, we've had some smokeheads that just have been problematic and we just, you know, twist them out, put a new device in. So I think if we, again, don't take timely action in replacing them, that would be considered false. The initial indication, it would not be false because it failed, the system's doing what is done, but if we don't take action on it, it's acceptable.
I'd agree, yeah, I'd agree. Yeah, and just to give you an update on the numbers, so I have twenty-two total calls from January first, since January first. One was contractor related, eight were burnt food, six were smoking, and seven were unknown. Unknown is when my staff in the fire department gets there and there's no good reason for that smoke alarm going off. In that case, the next business day, our alarm company comes out and diagnoses it and typically just replaces the smokehead.
Keith?
First of all, I feel honored that all these important people came to discuss the issue. Prior to this, there was not a lot of discussion, so I appreciate the gentleman to my rate. The numbers as of this morning at seven o'clock, Mr. Beers was thirty-seven for the Brookwood. Three of the apartments we've been to multiple times, apartment eighteen oh eight, we've been to three times.
So there's been fifteen calls since November thirtieth?
This is, I got them to run it this morning.
I'd like, yeah, if you could share that with me, that'd be great, because those aren't the numbers we have, anywhere close.
Regardless of that. Typically, what happens is, and I took the liberty, because I get to go to a lot of these, I broke it down to each organization. A lot of times, the M U calls are outside contractors. Somewhere along the line, it slips through the, these gentlemen's control and a contractor shows up to do something. What I have a problem with, and Mr. Waltz alluded to this, a contractor the other day was working in a new Chick-fil-A, and he disturbed the fire alarm. What I have a problem with is that gentleman laughing in my face going, yeah, we dropped it. Okay? And there's no recourse. There's absolutely no recourse. Okay?
Self-imposed. It's a recourse.
We've had cases where it was their own alarm technician for the university. They've identified that. We have a new guy. I hope the new guy stays long past the time that I retire. Okay? But if he doesn't, and we got a different person, we need some outside controls put in place to control the check and balance system.
And what type of outside control would you suggest?
The ordinance.
Just the ordinance, okay. And I mean...
It's, I look at this ordinance as an ordinance that is a check and balance system. It's the same reason you do an ordinance tonight about parking RVs, you hope you never use it, but if you have to, it's in place. You put no parking signs up because you hope you never have to use it, but it controls the problem. Same thing with the fire alarm ordinance.
Right.
Okay? A lot, and I agree with what the gentleman was saying, a lot of it's not specifically their problem, it's outside people that come into the university or in, you know, Mr. Beers has his own staff sometimes painting their apartments, they forget to take the alarm system out, they're sanding drive, we end up showing up. Penn Manor, as you alluded to, was a contractor property. We went there oodles of times. Matter of fact, this year, we've been there seven times, and we've had meetings with the contractor, okay? And it took quite a while for the contractor to react, right? Yeah?
Now, would you say that the high school alarms that you've had, these seven, have been contractor-related? That's that type of thing?
We have some trouble with the band and their hairspray and the getting ready for the event, but we can get past that. The thing about, even with Mr. Beers' apartments, when you go there the first time, the people get the idea. If they don't care, we'll be back. And I think that's what happens in some cases, not all, but some cases, and they're the ones that you need to address. The one that's one here or one there, once you go there, they get the idea. You know, the girl that's doing her hair underneath the detector, once you say, here's what caused this, she gets the idea, she moves. Okay? But every once in a while, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Beers, but I'm sure there's kids that don't listen sometimes.
Gee, do you think?
I, it's a wild guess. Okay? And they're the ones that, you know, the police department has used the three-strike rule on some occasions for the disorderly conduct. Sometimes that works, sometimes it doesn't work. So in the long run, it's fixable, it's doable, and it's a deterrent. The ordinance is nothing more than a deterrent to keep everybody on their A game. That's what it really boils down to.
And in the time that we have... And in the time that we have been discussing this, which is a long time...
Your hair's getting great.
I know.
Look at mine.
But we have, as a committee, come to the conclusion that we feel that we need to move forward with a false alarm ordinance. Now, it's just a matter of getting some of the semantics right. Because we want to make sure that we have the correct wording for what is a false alarm, and then we will move on from there. Our solicitor has already prepared some stuff for us. Some of us have met, and we have been working on that. And I just want you to know that we are going to continue to work on that. But the most important part for us right now is a firm, good definition of false alarm.
My closing, I would ask this of counsel. The real bottom line here is very, very simple. My volunteers are not paid.
That's right.
You know, these gentlemen here are all paid. The police chief is paid, the zoning officer is paid. My people aren't. They leave their families, their meals at 2:00 in the morning, Christmas Day, to go to some things that quite honestly are just ridiculous calls to go to. You know, and when you go the third or fourth time, it turns into what? Crying wolf. So now, when it goes off the fourth time, the person goes, "I'm not going again," because I know when it is. And then the last part to that is, you all struggled with our budget in previous weeks. It's wearing and tearing the equipment. So there's a cost to that. So yes, I think legitimately, to answer your question, it's not really that difficult. You know, we have a definition that basically says it's not a fire, it's caused by vaping, or smoking, or somebody maliciously pulling the fire alarm system. If somebody pulled the fire alarm system, I don't mean the 300 of us in the school. And we identify that person, would it not help you to let us prosecute them versus him prosecuting or do something? You know, there are rules and places for all the organizations. You know, Mr. Beard says you're not allowed to have candles. You're not allowed to have smoking. So when the bag of marijuana comes out the back window and they're having a vaping party with it, there's a way to prosecute that. It's not the three-strike rule. It's, could be immediate. Just, there are just some things that I chuckle to some degree and say, "I'm glad somebody came to the table." Because quite honestly, it's, some of us is getting old.
And I agree. And it is getting old. And I have to, you know, reiterate the fact about it is a volunteer fire department.
Yeah, and we're getting hung...
And that's the key.
We're getting hung up on numbers, you know, whether it's 37, 25, 13, doesn't matter. You know?
Right.
I don't know what this, at the end of the day, when you look at all the numbers, throw all the numbers into the blender, push the pre-A button, you're going to prosecute some contractors. Do any of these people here to my right care about that? I can't speak for them, but I would think not. You know? The residential people, we don't have, every once in a while, we have a residential person, once in a while. And you go to their house, and they're tired of getting up at what? Oh, 3:00 in the morning when their fire alarm goes off. Now they're upset. Not only that we've brought five fire trucks or four fire trucks, whatever it is, to their development, they usually fix it. Because they don't want to get out of bed tomorrow morning at 3:30 in the morning. I looked at your ordinance, there's a couple typos, especially in the who's going to enforce it. Because it mentions, it mentions medical in here. There's no medical definitions. It also says about, the fire department is willing to track our side, but I don't think you want us tracking the police side. I don't know that we can track the medical side. That's in that ordinance document as well. So there's a couple little tweaks that you might want to look at.
Rebecca, did you give them the copy of the first one that we...
Yeah, the number one, right. Well, and if, may I, may I speak to our group here?
Oh, go right ahead.
The copy of the ordinance that I think, hopefully we'll all have the results at some point, was more of a first go at it from our solicitor. It really doesn't have all of the meat to it yet. That's, I think, why we're asking about things like definition. Because right now, the definition is not incredibly clear, because I think, and I 100% understand your point about the numbers are the numbers. I think the issue that we're running into is, everybody's numbers are different because just of the way that we define false alarms. For the borough's perspective, though, and for the sake of us enforcing this ordinance, I think we do need to be as specific as possible. Otherwise, we will run into issues with the ordinance not being enforceable, because we can't, there's a difference, you know, the university says that's not a false alarm, Blue Rock says it is. We look in our records and we say, well, we don't know, because one says it is and one says it isn't. So I think that's, that's the issue that I think we're just seeing from the code enforcement side, is if we're not incredibly clear on the definition, it makes it harder for us to actually enforce the ordinance. Does that make sense?
It does. That's why we want to nail down these definitions. And Keith, on your, I think if you're going to have the same thing I have, the third page down at the bottom where it says administration and enforcement?
Yes.
Are you there?
I highlighted it.
Yes. Well, I have notes all over mine. And one of the things that I wrote in here and that we have talked about as the Public Works Committee, is administration and enforcement would be by the Blue Rock Fire Company. And designate a borough officer or a fire department administrator. That would be a fire department administrator. And the way we're looking at this, at least what we discussed, this is not set in stone, it's not definite. The fire department keeps the records and informs the borough office if and when a citation is needed. Secondly, the warnings to people who are habitual problems are sent by the fire department. And then citations would be sent by the code officer. If we get to that point after, you know, they have their number, whatever we determine within this ordinance, then they get, they get a citation.
If somewhere, somebody handed me some information about three strikes.
Yes, I think there's, wait a minute.
Unless it's a contractor or some other place. I don't know where that came from.
The amount of false alarms is to be established by resolution?
Right.
You'd have to put that in the ordinance to some degree of, you know, the first two, you get, unless you are a contractor, then it's immediate. But if you, if we go to this place three times, somebody wrote that. I don't, that's not mine. So I don't work, maybe that's my boss, I don't know.
So the way, because the way it reads now is, it, council by resolution would set the number of alarms that they would consider in one calendar year to be above that threshold. Maybe it's three, maybe it's five, whatever it is. But then, the borough wouldn't be citing anyone until, well, until they didn't pay that fee to you all. I think that's, that's how it's written currently.
My point is, the fire department has absolutely no problem doing the fire stuff. But the police department somehow, somebody has to do theirs. And there's a medical component in this ordinance that...
I don't see the medical thing.
The definition of false alarms, is any medical, please?
Yeah, page two, false alarms, there's a medical component there. Page two says false alarms.
Yeah. Oh, I see that.
My understanding of the reasoning behind that is to be consistent with borough code and what, what has to be considered alarm at a broader level.
And the medical side, what happens, and the police chief can attest that, people have medical pendants. And after a bit, when your grandmother gets, or grandfather gets confused and pushes it three times, four times in a day, the ambulance responds. That's typically the medical alarms that are...
Well, I'll be honest here, on page two, starting with where it says false alarm, and going down to where it says responsible person, I have a big bracket there with a question mark that I think things need to be spelled out clearer in that particular area.
Again, in closing, the numbers are numbers. You know, people are people. As staff comes and goes, things change.
Exactly.
Every organization, yours included, you know? And so this is nothing more than just a deterrent. Because once in a while, you have that bad child that shows up that you need to deal with. You know, there are some people, I think, thinks that we were going to write 50 of these every week. That's not the case. You know? So thank you for your time.
You're quite welcome. But I would also like to ask not only the committee, but anyone from council, or the mayor, or police chief, or anybody, if you have any questions for any of these gentlemen concerning your feelings on false alarms.
It seems to me like there is some agreement here. Like mechanical failure, no. Self-imposed, if it's against a regulation, yes, you should be fined. If it's a self-imposed by a hairspray or something like that, maybe three warnings. We talk about warnings. But that seems pretty simple. That, if you agree on, on that method there, we're only looking for, we're just looking for an agreement, right? And then we can just move on and...
So we can move on and write something.
Get it for...
Yeah, we did not hear anything concise about what is a false alarm, so that we could fill out our ordinance, like a false...
We did, like self-imposed, mechanical failure, no.
But yeah, but we haven't heard an agreement out here. We haven't heard these gentlemen saying anything. So that there's some kind of consensus, so that there's not angry feelings here. Now, burn popcorn. What about burn popcorn?
That seems like a warning. You know, a child does a false alarm, that's against the regulation. That's a fine. Vaping, that's against your regulations. That's a fine. No warnings on that. But if it's something very unusual, like the burnt popcorn or the hairspray under a, that seems like a warning there.
Sometimes showers.
If you do the three-strike rule, you know, the first one's a warning, usually most of the time, that fixes it.
Yeah.
You know? Because now I walk in and say to you, "Hey, can you get this fixed?"
Yeah.
And you can sit there and go, "No."
Yeah.
And throw me out the front door. But if I come back to you and say, you know, this is strike number one, two more strikes, you're going to get a fine.
Yeah.
Then it sort of registers somewhere, I think, to a common layperson. Hey, there's recourse here.
If I may, I've put together a pretty comprehensive definition of false alarm, and what is and is not included. But the chief hasn't seen it yet. I'd like to share it with him.
Yeah.
I think it's...
I would like to have a copy of that. Is it short?
I'm not known for being short, if you're worried.
We have a five-minute clock. But no, if I may...
Yes, Tom.
Again, last meeting we had, you gave us some homework to go, sit down and talk and stuff. And I think we did, you know, I mentioned the, again, numbers are numbers, whatever. But we've taken the appropriate measures and implemented to reduce. I think if I could recommend that we sit down and, again, define false alarm. You know, the ordinance, you know, Rebecca shared that with me today, so I really haven't digested. I just gave it to Jeff. So again, it is, we're talking specifically false alarm, what's the definition. But I haven't truly digested the entire ordinance. If there's other exceptions that I may have, and I know that there'll be a public hearing or something in that we would have...
Oh, yeah.
If we can work collectively, you know, with Blue Rock and stuff, to say, hey, what do you, what do you think about this and stuff, and come back.
Well, I think that's a very good idea.
Something for your retirement, that the next person has one more. It has to be comprehensive to the point that when the four of us are going, that somebody else can say, here's the rules of engagement.
I think Tom could attest to the fact that I write amazing policies. So I've got, I think, some really good ideas right here that fit both sides of the discussion and are reasonable. And take, for example, a broken sprinkler head. Is it a fire? No. Is it a false alarm? Not really, because there is action that's needed by the fire department to help prevent damage or electrical hazards, things like that. So...
However, when the guy hangs the coat hanger on it, because he thought the aliens were going to get it. And it floods the floor. To me, that's a different story.
Well, we've had a number of pipes that fail because ice. There is still a hazard there that warrants, I think, fire department response, and I wouldn't consider some of those to be false alarm. But again, I've tried to put down something that defines all those cases. And the things that most specifically, I think, frustrate Keith Echelmann, I have said are...
IE Fire Department.
Sorry?
That's right, the fire department.
Well, I don't know all of them. But I know some of the things you do.
When's your next, when's your next committee meeting, tell us?
Um, January.
Second Tuesday in January.
I'm sorry?
Second Tuesday in January. I don't know the...
Can you bring me back a written definition of a false alarm for that meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Except I would love to have it prior to the meeting. I'm...
We'll try to have it done prior.
I mean, because I'd like to go over all of that kind of thing prior to any meeting that...
I'm sure Mr. Beards will invite us down for lunch, and we can sit there and iron out the details.
That sounds like a really good idea.
He raised his hand.
I just, Rebecca, this is the first I've seen this. Is, am I missing like what the fine is, or am I seeing that a false alarm sends you to the district judge for a fine not more than $1,000? Is that the fine?
No, no, the, that would be if, if the, if the fee, whatever the fee is...
If they don't pay. You need a way to collect that fee.
Precisely. So if the fee is not paid, I think it says within 30 days, then you get a citation. Which the borough would be the one giving the citation, the fee would come from the fire department.
But we don't know what the fee is yet.
Right. That would be set by resolution for the fee schedule.
We have not determined that. And if you would get together that false alarm thing, and you can email that to me or Rebecca, or all of us. But definitely, I'd like to have that before that date in January. And then we will put this on the agenda again for January at that first meeting for Public Works. And we can then see where we're at after you guys, if you come up to any new conclusions, we would love to know what they are. And I want to thank all of you for coming tonight and sharing. I want to thank you also for doing what we have asked you to do. Because we needed more information in order to move forward. And I have to say that everybody has been very good about getting that for us. So I want to thank you for that. Does anyone have any questions for the gentlemen?
Yeah, I have a question. So he comes up with what false alarms are. He comes up with what he thinks false alarms are. He comes up with what he thinks false alarms are. Where is the resolution made of what a false alarm is?
Well, they're going to come to an agreement. I...
They're going...
How are they going to come to an agreement? They're not planning to work outside of here. They're just planning to give us what they've done.
Yeah.
Kind of outside of here, yeah.
And I think if you keep it simple, I mean, the self-imposed accident, self-imposed against regulations, yes. Those are, there's three things to think about here, I think, for all of you. And if it's mechanical failure, no. And it doesn't have to be complicated, but...
That's right.
No accidents.
Ultimately, counsel, you will, you will ask the solicitor to weigh in to make sure there's a definition...
Absolutely.
...that's on our borough code. So I don't think there's any need to worry too much about you. And not to say that you all are legal experts or anything, but it will certainly go through the right processes to make sure...
It will go through the solicitor before any final definition is put into an ordinance. Any other questions or comments from anybody? Well then, thank you very much.
All right.
And we will move on to the next item on the agenda. And that's the presentation and review of draft Freedom Memorial Park master plan. Now... You've been very patient, waiting all this time.
Yes, I have. Okay, I'll give you like a thumbs up or something. Alrighty. Good evening, everybody. My name is Sophie Cramsey, and I'm representing U R D.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Sophie Cramsey, and I'm representing U R D C. Tonight, we're gonna be reviewing the draft Freedom Memorial Park master plan that was written and developed in conjunction with an assigned study committee and the public. So before we begin, it's important to distinguish the purpose of a park master plan. This plan is a tool to be used as a guide for short and long-term development based on the public goals and objectives for parks and recreation, the physical features of the site, and in conjunction with current and future facilities of Millersville Borough. The master plan is set up in conformance with the requirements of the 2019 Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Borough of Recreation, which is otherwise known as D C N R. The process used to develop this master plan can then be used as justification of future funding requests to D C N R. There, okay, sorry about that. There are multiple forms of public participation used for this master plan. The first being the key study committee. The committee was made up of residents of Millersville Borough who are familiar with the park and who are active in borough affairs and interested in the master plan for Freedom Memorial Park. The committee met with U R D C once a month for nine months to continue the master planning process. The second would be the public survey, the first public survey. At both public meetings, paper copies of surveys were provided to the residents of Millersville Borough. These surveys were then posted onto the borough's website for those who cannot attend the meeting. These results were considered when creating the conceptual plan. Number three is the first public meeting. It was a public kickoff in order for the public to become familiar with all elements of a master site development plan. For public engagement, stations were set up around the room for the public to read and interact with. These graphic storyboards with photos of potential recreational uses and other potential improvements with a directed dot preference exercise where the public could indicate their priorities for the park. Public survey number two addressed the thoughts and concerns of the conceptual plan during the final drafting phases. The public could voice their opinions on vehicular circulation, playground improvements, prioritizing the new recreational facilities that were proposed, and give any additional thoughts or comments. Lastly, the second public meeting was for the draft site plan to be presented to the general public with a preliminary cost plan and phasing plan. As we continued to collect information on the park during the beginning phases of the master plan, we collected information about the site inventory. This included the physical features, natural features, and physical features analysis of the park. A map was then created to visualize the areas of potential interest, label the existing buildings and recreational facilities at the park, and determine the conditions of the facilities. I'm gonna leave this up, this map up for a moment, just for you guys to quickly review the map. But it's also gonna be included into the report as an insert.
I just have a question about the skateboard park area. You don't ever have any trouble there, do you? I think it's a good, when I walk through there, they just seem to be having fun, it looks like a good group there, so.
There's been, there's been arguments on both sides where there's been pro skateboard park and then people against it. But overall, I would say that keeping it seems like the best option.
Yeah.
And improving it so that the skateboarders still have an area to go to in Millersville.
I walked through there a lot, and I've not seen any trouble or disturbance of any kind. They look to be having fun, so, good for them.
All right. The location of Freedom Memorial Park is an ideal location for improvements and expansion of the borough's recreational amenities. It's located with direct access to the neighboring Eschelman Elementary School and for multiple potential pedestrian access points. The following list is the current facilities at the park, their general conditions, and the level of use. So as you can see on the list, most of the facilities are in fair-to-good condition and get used frequently. The following is a list of proposed facilities that have been recommended in key study meetings, key person interviews, and public meetings. These facilities will be included in the final planned site design drawing for Freedom Memorial Park. The list is in order priority as designated by the Freedom Memorial Park Key Study Committee. So first would be removing the existing restroom and replacing it with a prefabricated ADA compliant and four-seasoned restroom. Second would be additional ADA compliant benches and bench pads. Third would be freestanding playground equipment for various age groups and abilities, ADA compliant playground surfacing, fencing around the playground equipment, outdoor fitness equipment, expanding and adding parking, stormwater B M Ps which include rain gardens, bio swales, pervious pavements, installing community gardens which would include raised garden beds and having deer fencing around this area, ADA compliant path from Schurzer Lane to the second baseball field. This can serve as a future connection point then to the Eschelman Elementary School, ADA compliant pathways to the existing skate park and basketball courts, transforming the existing basketball courts into a mixed-use court, resurfacing the skate park with a cement-based coating, and educational signs. All right. Freedom Memorial Park, like I said, is an ideal community park. The activity, the active facilities at the park are located with enough distance between them so that even when nearly all the facilities are being used, the park does not feel overcrowded. The playground area is spacious, gently sloped, and well-suited for its current use. The park is large enough to accommodate additional facilities, increasing available activities, and without changing the quiet neighborhood feel of the park that the residents love. One consideration to make with Freedom Memorial Park would be designing and constructing readily accessible and usable facilities by individuals with disabilities. Some of these modifications would include accessible routes to all existing and proposed facilities, renovated restrooms, and accessible playground facilities and playground equipment. Other design considerations depend on the following factors. The topography, most facilities proposed to meet ADA regulations will only require minimal earth disturbance. The A S T M and C P S C, which is protecting the public by using safe materials at the park and making sure all of the facilities are up to date with the standards. And sustainable design and green infrastructure, creating a park that's functional, not harmful to the environment, and aesthetically pleasing. To run through the design process and recommendations, we followed these general guidelines. First would be to determine facilities to be retained, removed, renovated, or added. Then we received public input from the first public meeting and public survey. We developed two concepts and two cost estimates. These concepts were then evaluated and revised into one draft final concept. We received public input on the final draft concept at the second public meeting and revised and prepared a final draft plan for review. So those steps led us to the site development plan that is currently being shown on the screen. This shows the proposed facilities that the key study committee and public came up with in locations suitable based off of the design considerations. The work was then broken down into three different phases. These phases can be combined or selected to be developed in a different order or as funding proceeds. Phase one would include the following. Installing a prefabricated restroom facility and demolishing the existing restroom. Installing playground equipment for children of all ages and abilities. Poured-in-place rubber surfacing around the play equipment and outdoor fitness equipment. Installing fencing around the play equipment of children under the age of five. The addition of picnic tables, a water fountain, benches, and an interpretive sign. An estimated cost for the first phase would be $428,405. Phase two would include expanding the existing parking lot and installing off-street parking for a total of 24 additional spaces. Installing a community garden with deer fencing, and installing an ADA compliant path from Schurzer Lane to the second baseball field. This estimated cost would be $124,020. And finally, phase three would be installing outdoor fitness equipment for ages 13 and up. Installing ADA compliant pathways to connect the perimeter path to the skate park and basketball courts. Resurfacing the existing basketball court and transforming this into a mixed-use court, and resurfacing the skate park with a cement-based coating. So phase three would be an estimated cost around $124,231. An estimated total project cost would be $676,656.
And this money comes out of the general fund, or?
No, this, we would be going for D C N R grant funding.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And how much money do you anticipate you'll be able to get through grants?
Grants, we can usually get up to, okay, this is gonna be complicated to explain, but I'll try to explain to the best of my ability. D C N R, we can ask for $250,000. And then another grant agency called D C E D, we can ask for that matching fund of $250,000, let's just say. They would both then pay for all of the, in the entirety of the project then. So hopefully, if both things work accordingly through the granting agencies, there'd be no money spent out of pocket from the borough.
And if I just may add, we're hoping to do it phase by phase.
Yes, yes.
For that initial grant funding for just phase one, because we would have to do it for, we would have to do grant applications for multiple.
Multiple years. Yeah, okay.
The maintenance of a public park is crucial to creating a place the community wants to use and visit often. An ongoing commitment by all municipal departments and the residents of the community will be crucial in upgrading and maintaining this beautiful neighborhood park. Revenue that can be used towards the park can be coming in in different ways, such as increasing the revenue from the park, so an example would be raising the cost of renting a pavilion. The second would be applying for grants from D C N R, D C E D, or other smaller granting agencies. Fundraising or getting support from groups that utilize or could utilize the park, and connecting with local businesses. So the next steps for the Freedom Memorial Park master plan would be D C N R review, followed by the formal adoption of the master plan by the Borough Council. And at this time, if there's any other questions or concerns, I'd be happy to answer.
I just missed, the map went away too fast. Where would the community garden be? Is that directly behind John Hurst Building, that rectangular?
No, it's up.
Oh, oh, I see it. Oh, the, beside the barn. Doesn't look like a quarter acre, but I guess it is, yeah. I bet that would be.
So this really needs to move forward in a timely manner, because we need to be getting these grants applied for in January, is that correct?
Yes.
So Rebecca, what would you like us to do tonight, if anything? Because this is the master plan, I assume?
Yes. Now, as Sophie said, because we still have to do the review with D C N R, which, which, for D C N R's purposes, you meet with them when you're getting ready to submit. Meeting with them, doing a walkthrough, probably will be with you and myself and Kyle and other folks to have a walkthrough of it. They'll give us any feedback of, hey, you know, you're gonna have a better chance with X or Y or whatever. And then based on that discussion, we bring forward to you all the final version of the master plan, which, correct me if I'm wrong, likely won't change very much from what you've seen this evening. But we will need the master plan passed by resolution for us to be able to apply for grant funding. And you'll notice from the, for the budget for 2025, we put in money for the process of applying for the grant, which will take money to do. But we don't actually anticipate actually needing to budget for, if we needed to do it, matching funds until 2026, because we, if we apply for this D C N R grant, and if we're successful, we won't actually find out if we're successful until the end of 2025. And we won't actually be signing any grant agreements until January 2026. So there, there is no, there was no reason for this upcoming budget to budget actual construction costs, knowing that we wouldn't even know if we got the grant until 2026.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. And this concludes the Public Welfare and Public Works Committee meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. One of the things I really enjoy doing is recognizing our employees for their amount of service. And there's some folks here I'd like to recognize this evening. One is one of our officers who's been with us for 15 years, Officer Rudisil. Believe it or not, Officer Rudisil, 15 years, he is actually the fourth most senior officer we have in our department. Behind the chief, we have lieutenant, we have Sergeant Reynolds, and then Officer Rudisil.
Officer Rudisil, we thank you for your 15 years of service. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yes, I appreciate it. Last but not least, I do have one more.
Rebecca, same just random, it's been with us one year.
That's an amazing feat, you are.
It wasn't on the agenda, I assume, to preserve the surprise.
That's right, it was. So, congratulations for one year. She had no idea that was coming at all.
I will forgive the break from agenda.
Yeah, her and I were actually even meeting together this morning. We were asked to speak with a group of eighth graders from Mordecai, or Mordecai Middle School. And they were in a gifted student program. They were actually brought into the chamber under the organization called Leadership Lancaster, most of you have heard of that. And actually, Kat's sister, Kat, Rebecca's sister, was part of the chamber who helped put some of that stuff together and talk about it. So we had a great meeting this morning with some eighth graders from Penny Mountain School District.
Excellent.
Mordecai Middle.
Also, and I know Rebecca was there as well, last Friday, there was a phenomenal turnout at Millersville University for Santa Claus coming to town. The business association put together, I believe, 250 stockings for the kids who got to sit on Santa's lap and got a stocking. So a lot of our local businesses were also there, set up tables, and enjoyed a couple of hours of festivities.
Excellent.
Yep. And two weeks ago, I had the opportunity to meet with Kyle from Millersville University, who the meteorologist, the city always has a meeting, he gives his forecast for the winter predicted. So you'll be very happy to know, we're having a very. So you'll be very happy to know we're having a very mild winter. Yes.
That and 25 cents will not even buy you a cup of coffee.
Yeah, he's, he's, I guess he said Lancaster County normally gets anywhere from about 35 inches of snow annually, on an average. He's actually saying that we're gonna get less than 20 for the entire season, so...
That's good.
That's very good.
Definitely help out on the, the snowplow budget. So, uh, turn it over to the chief. We have a couple of nothing reports. He missed October and November. Chief?
Okay, yeah, we normally have these on the second meeting, but we missed the last meeting, so I did not have a chance to give October, and we're not having the next meeting. So it doesn't take me long, I'll just rattle off the police department activities for the month of October and November, side by side. Calls for service, in October, we answered 524 calls, November, 404. Ordinance complaints, we had 21 in October, 15 in November. Ordinance citations, we issued 16 in October, 10 November. Disruptive conduct reports, we issued two in October, none in November. Criminal arrests, we had 16 in October and 15 in November. 10 adults, six juveniles in October, seven adults, eight juveniles in November. Part one offenses for October were only one, and we cleared it for 100%. Part one for November were four, and we cleared all four for 100%. Part two offenses for October were 40, and we cleared all 40 for 100% for October. November, part two offenses were 26, and we cleared 26 for 100% clearance. Traffic violations, we had 63 in October, 31 in November. 21 were speed, 42 were others in October. We had nine speeding and 22 others in November. 22 vehicle accidents in October, 13 in November. Issued 95 parking tickets in October and 31 in November. Vehicle miles patrolled were close to 4,000 miles in October and just about 3,000 in November. So they do vary a little bit from month to month. In terms of any serious investigations added to the detective or myself, we did have a terroristic threats case that we got in October that we were able to close. And we did, we did have another sex offense investigation in November that is being worked on. And that's it.
And two more quick things. Unfortunately, we are going to be keeping our Civil Service Commission busy, because unfortunately, one of our newest officers just came on, was stolen by Department of New York County. We've lost one of our new officers, so...
So we've been riding a big high with all the hiring, but these things you cannot predict, and it's part of the deal. It's not what we want to have happen, but, so it just knocked us back a peg and...
So you have to start the searches all over again?
We do. Yep, we'll be, Civil Service is actually meeting next Monday to get that process started, so we come back in January, they will be having recommendations brought before council to, again, start that advertisement process and get some, get some, and get some applications in here, get these positions filled. So, the only last thing I would like to do is, I would like to publicly recognize a man who committed a lot of his time to this borough, Mike Kirkham. Served on this council for 12 years, volunteered. Mr. Kirkham passed away a week ago today.
Oh, did he?
And I just wanted to publicly recognize and thank for the service that man provided to this borough.
All right, let's do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't believe we have anybody from the university or from Penn Mater High School.
The university provided, last minute couldn't attend, so they provided a written write-up. It got out of here back up today.
I didn't see that.
I hadn't either, but I will, let's see here, university report.
We can all just read that.
Yeah, 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 just for your reading pleasure.
Very well, then we'll move on to your report then, Rebecca.
All right. Oh, and just to echo what the, the mayor said, really enjoyed the meeting this morning with the middle school students and hope to convince a few of them that this was a career path worth going into. Uh, the first item that I have on here is just a quick update about the hometown here banner project, since it's been a bit since we've talked about it last. I'm pleased to report that the borough has received approval from the PP&amp;L Electric Company to use 23 of the poles in the borough for our first phase of the project. You're allowed to do up to 25 on a yearly basis without having to pay. So 23 of the, of the 25 that we had applied for were accepted, meaning that we can put banners up on those poles that we requested. And our volunteer Julie and her husband have been working great on putting together the design. And in the office here, Edmonton A is putting together our wonderful flyers slash applications slash public information documents, so to speak. So we are going, we're, we're very much on track, and we're gonna be ready to basically officially launch the project in January and allow folks to start applying to have a banner, be one of the 23 spots. The, the application's gonna open January 31st, it'll be open through April, and then the goal is to have them up before Memorial Day of 2025. So this is a precursor, get pumped, get the word out. We will, because we only have 23 spots, it will be first come, first served. And there is a price associated with this as well, it will cost someone $300 to apply to have that banner. But all the details will be coming out soon, but we wanted to give council an update. And of course, thank you to Councilmember Gabriele as well for helping to, to guide our, our volunteer and making sure she has everything she needs. Second item is more of a procedural item, but an important one nonetheless. Because it is our last meeting in the year 2024, we need council to approve a motion to advertise the borough meeting schedule for 2025. This is a legal requirement, but the nice thing is, is that because we kind of, because we don't have to reorganize in January this year, because it was not an election, a municipal election this year, we don't have to reorganize in January, so we can go ahead and approve that meeting schedule tonight. There have been no changes on it from this year's schedule, except that due to January 1st falling on a Wednesday, moving the first planning commission to the next week. Otherwise, the schedule remains the same as, as it has been for the last couple of years. So I just need a motion to advertise that from council this evening.
I move that we advertise the Millersville Borough 2025 meeting schedule. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, abstentions, or motion carries.
All right, thank you. Coming to a newspaper near you soon.
And only a newspaper.
Sorry. Um, so the next item is, is coming back to an item that we were discussing out of Finance Committee. So what we'd be looking for this evening, and I'm happy to, I, I regretfully forgot to put the actual motion into here, but I could read you the motion if you'd like to then repeat it after me. But this would be to, to approve the consolidation of the bank accounts into just two banking institutions and open the needed accounts to allow us to separate all of our funds into their own accounts. This is between Members First Bank and Univers Bank. And I, again, can answer any questions about that.
So moved.
Well, I'm just gonna read it for you.
Oh, do you have to read it again?
Well, I didn't give you the full sentence.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Seconded.
Good. You don't need to go through it again.
You don't need to do it.
Unless you do for the minutes, in which case, please feel free to read it out.
For the sake of the minutes, I do need someone to motion to keep the same signers, the same signer makeup as with our current accounts.
I so moved.
It's been moved and seconded.
You're not gonna get him to say the actual words, Rebecca.
Yeah, he'll, all right. Um, we have a motion in the second. Yes, okay.
All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions, motion carries with unanimity.
Thank you.
Of whatever that was.
Go with the minutes. Here's a reminder, there is, and this is a very good reminder for everyone, there's no council meeting on December 24th. This is our last council meeting of the year. So everybody enjoy the holidays. And then my final reminder of this evening, and this is, this is crucially important as it affects every single person in the borough. There are, are, are changes to solid waste and recycling for 2025. Most importantly, on December 16th, the new toters, the new mobile carts are going to be delivered to every residential household in the borough. Every resident will receive two toters, trash and recycling. A couple of really key things to know, yes, you may absolutely go ahead and write your address on your toters. Welcome to do so. An info flyer from Penn Waste directly should have hit everyone's mailboxes, I believe it hit at least last week. That has really important information in it, as well as our trash and recycling newsletter that can take, that, that comes directly from the borough. That will be out ideally next week, hopefully is when that's gonna be hitting mailboxes. That has a lot more info than just that flyer did, but the flyer does cover the, the basics. Residents should make sure, even though we're switching to toter service, still bag all of your trash. That is, again, crucially important. They will not take loose trash, it has to be bagged. Don't bag your recycling though, because bags aren't recyclable. The old, a big question we get asked, old cans, what are you supposed to do with them? You can put them out with a sign that says, please take with trash. So like, any of those green recycling cans that you, that you've collected here from the borough office that you have, you can put those out and say, just please take with trash. Same thing with any personal trash cans that you've had, you're welcome to put those out. We do have a cutoff date for that, and I, January 20, thank you, January 27th is a cutoff date for that. After that, if you do put out your trash can to be taken, you are gonna have to get a, a trash tag for that. Yellow tags are still available for extra trash, so if you can't fit it in your toter, you do need to come into the, to the borough office to buy a yellow extra trash tag. They will not take any bags that are sitting outside of toters, except if you are using the battery bags, those will continue to be used as normal. We have a bunch of information on our website right now. We've got the flyer that already went out, the newsletter that'll be coming out soon, the calendar for 2025 is listed on the website. We, we know that there's gonna be a lot of questions and concern. What we really encourage residents, because we've gotten lots and lots of calls, we encourage you to wait until you get your toters before you start calling into us or before you start calling into Penn Waste with, with questions or concerns about them. We have to get them all out to residents on the 16th, and then at that point, we can deal with any specific concerns folks have about the toter that they receive. Any questions from council, anything that you think that residents really need to know upfront right now?
So they, it's emphasized that cutoff date, no one wants to pay, you know, borrow tags to get rid of their old toter. You said it's the 27th?
Yeah, January 27th.
I'm getting mine out there, I'm not gonna buy tags to get rid of my old trash cans.
Yeah, absolutely.
And all of that information was included in the mailer that went out to all residents?
Yep, the mailer, and then it will be in the newsletter that will go out to residents as well by the end of this month.
Very well.
Feel free, of course, to, to continue to call into the office, we will answer all of your questions. We're just trying to get out as much information as possible to hopefully cut down on the number of calls we get. And I think that's all I can say.
Very well, nothing on my president's report, which means that we move on to one of our last items, which is a final round of citizens' requests or concerns. You've all been incredibly patient over the course of the past 90-ish minutes. Do we have any citizen requests or comments? I was wondering when you take your turn.
No, it's just, I live at 55 North Dix Street. My question is, it went pretty fast right in the beginning, but we don't know what the actual ordinance said and what the amendment was. Is there any way you can state that?
Which of the ordinance is the amendment?
Which one are you talking about?
The first one. What was the amendment changed to?
The Borough Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 3 AD zoning to revise regulations governing parking of recreational vehicles and trailers.
I have it here, I'm sure.
She's got it.
I think I have it in here.
She just gave it to him.
She gave it to him.
You don't have to get it.
Okay, good.
Okay, yeah, I'll take, yeah, oh, that's fine. I don't want to waste your time, I just didn't know if you had them, and I wanted to...
There you go.
Okay, okay, thank you.
That's all right. Other citizens request or concern?
Just a quick comment. I wasn't gonna say anything, but when you can talk about the skate park, I'm caring with the Parks Commission, but I also represent myself. I do want you to think that it was all roses and sunshine. I do think that the skate park has a place, we want everybody to come to the park, but just in case there's any future issue, I want it to be on the record that there definitely are issues. We actually had to talk bomb and hard about the types of equipment, the types of benches that we wanted to choose, but vandalism, because it's not the seven-year-olds that are carbonizing the benches in the back. It's also not the seven-year-olds that are smoking pot and cigarettes and cursing three-year-olds. So there, I just want you to know that it's not sunshine and rain.
Oh, okay, yeah.
But there is a place for it, and we do want to make sure the park's a place for everybody, but just in case there's some...
I'm not hurting you, I have a leg cramp right now.
No, no, I would be, if everybody wants to go home.
Stop looming.
I know, I, I ref'd a game at four o'clock, and it, I...
It's all right. Sir?
Yes, Dave Rhodes, well back, Rhodes. Um, just a quick question regarding the new change over to Penn Waste and everything. I know we had, the council had sent out stuff regarding, you know, about getting rid of the old recycling bin and the old trash can. My question would be, what are we looking at for the year 2026? Will they most likely be the same supplier, or are we going to have to get another supplier? Because if we need to get another, disposal service might want to hold on to our order of trash cans instead of going out and rebuying trash cans.
For the sake of the public, can I answer this one, please?
Please.
Okay. The contract that we have with Penn Waste is from 2025 through 2029.
Okay.
So it is a five-year contract, so I think you'll probably feel okay getting rid of it.
Just curious, because...
Very good question.
It's a good question, no?
Absolutely, it's a good question.
So...
That's a good question for the public to know.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Very good. Further questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I believe we have no unfinished business nor any reason to adjourn to executive session, so I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
You have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor of adjournment, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Mouth shut, okay, and...